I'd like to call to order the January School Board meeting for Nelson County Public Schools. At this time, I ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year, everyone. At this ti- oh, okay. Now, I will call for nominations for the position of School Board Chair. Or approve the agenda. I'm gonna flip that around. I'm gonna ask for approval of the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any who abstain? All right. Agenda has been approved. Now, I'm gonna call for nominations for the position of School Board Chair. Do we have any nominations?
Margaret Claire. I move that we approve Margaret Claire as the School Board Chair.
I'll second. Third, fourth.
All those in favor of Margaret Claire as the School Board Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Anyone abstain? All right. Margaret Claire has been voted the Chair.
Margaret Claire is Chair.
Margaret Chair is Margaret Claire.
Margaret Chair is Claire.
Okay. All right, it's time to install Margaret Claire as the Chair of the NCPS 4. And at this time, are you guys wanting to stay in the same seat that you're on?
Yeah, this is fine. Just like, let's just do this, and then we can just get the rest of it.
So you want the apples? What'd you say?
Well, I mean, no. Just yes. Give me the gallop. Let me hit you in the head with it. No, I'm just kidding. It just...
Don't put that by me.
I'm spreading out.
I see.
A lady needs her room.
I see.
All right, so now we have the Chair. Thank you very much, you guys, for your confidence. I would ask that for nominations for the Vice Chair. Anybody have a nomination for the Vice Chair?
I move that we, Shannon Powell be Vice Chair.
Second, third, fourth.
Now, hold on. So really what we should be doing is we should be nominating and then voting on the nomination, and then...
I nominate Shannon Powell to be Chair.
Okay, all right.
And I'll vote on the nomination.
All right. All right, so, all in favor of Shannon Powell being Vice Chair?
Got it.
Please say aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Thank you very much. Shannon is now the Vice Chair. We need to vote in the Clerk as well, so I'll take nominations for the position of Clerk. Last year, that was Tammy Ponton.
Tammy Ponton.
All right, so you are making a motion.
I'm making the motion for Tammy Ponton.
To be the Clerk of the School Board. Thank you very much. Anybody second that? All right, so that's Shannon seconds it. I'm trying to make it easy for people taking notes, too. Okay, thank you. All in favor of Tammy Ponton being the Clerk of the School Board?
Yes.
Any nays or abstentions? Not seeing any. You've got a new Clerk, Tammy Ponton. Thank you very much. We have a Deputy Clerk position as well. We're taking nominations for the Deputy Clerk. Last year, that was Shannon Irving.
Shannon Irving.
Yes, so...
Nominate Shannon Irving.
Can we have a nomination and a second, please?
Second.
Yep.
All right, so, are you getting this, Deputy Clerk? Thank you. All in favor of Shannon Irving being the Deputy Clerk, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions or nay votes? Okay, great. All right, so our meeting schedule is to be the second Thursday of each month. Does anybody have any kind of objections to that? Anybody wanna nominate that, or are we gonna vote on the second Thursday?
Prove in the calendar.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll make a nomination that we continue on the second Thursday of each month.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Okay. And that, we will, I'll entertain a motion for our location of our meetings as well, which would be here unless somebody has a...
I move we keep the location of the School Board meetings in this room, the meeting room at the courthouse.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
No, the only thing would be we talked about maybe trying to get back to school, but we just don't have a list here. So let's anchor here, and then if we wanted to field trips.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of having the location be here?
Aye.
Aye.
No abstentions or abstent- whatever, I just said nays, sorry. Okay, so now we're looking for a representative to the Board of Prep, and I am not...
I nominate Caesar.
Okay, and I can be the...
Yep.
The second, if you want, so we'll just switch those roles. All in favor of Caesar being the Prep Representative?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no nays or abstentions. For the Blue Ridge Vir- it's not the Virtual Governor's School anymore, what's it called?
Virginia, yeah.
Blue Ridge Virginia.
Sent dumb. Sorry. Obviously, I'm not gonna be the Rep. Can I have a nomination for the Blue Ridge, the BRVGS School Board Rep?
I'll nominate Shannon Powell.
I'll second.
And we need also an alternate.
George, can you do the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a nomination and a second for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization to sign documents in the absence of the Superintendent?
I'll nominate Shannon Irvin.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No nays or abstentions, okay? Authorization to sign documents on behalf of the Board?
Nominate Dr. Hester.
I have a second.
Wanted to make sure that was a nod. Again or out?
All in favor of Dr. Hester having the authorization to sign documents on our behalf?
Aye.
Aye.
No nays or abstentions, okay? We need a Nelson County Education Foundation Representative and alternate. It was Shannon Powell last time, and Caesar was the alternate.
I'll nominate Shannon Powell.
Keep it the same, all right? All in favor?
Aye.
No nays or... Right, we're all united. Thomas Jefferson, Adult Ed Board Representative. That was Caesar and George.
Okay.
Yes, keep it the same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're so sloppy. Now, typically, the delegate and the alternate delegate to vote at the Assembly Session, the VSBAs, the Chair and the Vice Chair.
I move the Chair and the Vice Chair be the delegate and the alternate to the VSBA.
I'll second.
I want to have a conversation on that, because I'm, if I don't re-up, then I may not go to that. So I would prefer to have, if I'm on here, just everybody needs to realize that we may need a different person.
Can we have that conversation at that time?
When we get closer.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can revisit any of these if we need to.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's perfect. Any of these can be amended.
All right, so Chair and Vice Chair, I got a, I got, I think we had a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done with that part. This is gonna be a fun year, guys. So I don't know what E was, call it order, but I'm calling y'all to order, okay? Get a grip on yourselves. I don't know what that was. Order in the court. The next part of it is recognitions and presentations, and unfortunately for weather, we are not gonna be doing our One Nelson Awards this month. So we can just move right on to comments from Board members. And I'm gonna start with Ms. Turner Giles.
Yeah, no comments. Just thank you to Dr. Hester and her team for all of what you're doing to try to get the, our students back in school. I know it's not an easy task. I know every phone call is not an easy phone call, but what we do appreciate is that you're focusing on safety. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
I will echo what Mrs. Turner Giles said. Thanks. Safety is always and has been for this Board, the priority and a leading principle for us, so thank you for taking that into account. And also letting their families know with plenty of time so that they can plan for the day. So we appreciate that and all the work left. I know your team's been working pretty hard. Thank you.
And just as George is the outgoing Chair, thank you for your leadership this past year. We appreciate it. It's not always fun, but we certainly appreciate everything you've done. Margaret, good luck.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Perkins?
Just echoing everything that was said before me. Happy New Year to everyone. Hope everyone had a good holiday. And I've traveled so many roads here in Nelson, and it's been, it's been not as easy as people think to get around and without demographic. And Nelson just makes it hard to get there and get back safely. And that, like we said before, that's how mine goes, keep everyone safe from top to bottom. And I appreciate what's being done to do that. And George, we appreciate you carrying the torch for the last year, and Margaret, good luck to you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. All right.
Hey, Happy New Year, everybody. And I just wanna start by thanking Margaret for doing such a good job as Vice Chair this year. I had a couple of occasions where I couldn't be here, and she really did a lot of, a lot of good work with that. And I leaned on her a bunch for various things during the year. So, and congratulations to you, Ms. Powell, for being Chair and Vice Chair. I know we're in good hands. Looking forward to a good year. And, and yes, the weather is, this is, for us, we don't get this very often, but this is the worst that we get usually, is for the snow to come, and then it gets no degrees outside, and it hangs around forever and ever and ever. And we just see when we can go back to school. But thank you for, Dr. Hester, and all your staff, for everything that you all are doing to try to make it so the kids can still learn, and hopefully we get back to school soon. So, that's all we got.
And I just wanna say thank you to everybody for putting your trust in me. We'll see how it goes. Everybody gets some good luck, so... I hope I don't need any luck, right? We have a great team. We're gonna, we're just gonna kill it this year, so I'm looking forward to it. I didn't wanna say, the one good thing about bad weather, starting out a second semester, is the kids, by the time, you know, they're gonna be excited to get back into school. You know, everyone's gonna be ready to go, right? Am I right?
Mom and Dad will be excited for them to get back.
It's crazy, so, yeah. So that's, that's a good, that's a bright lining for our little weather cloud, so... And hopefully the snow this weekend doesn't even hit. So, all right, let's just keep going.
As my comments, I know that Les is here, he said something about all the work he's been doing, but I do wanna give a little shout out to Taylor and his team, all the work that they're doing, because they're constantly out checking roads. The drivers are having to do extra work in their driveway. So I do wanna make sure that we as a Board acknowledge all that the transportation team's doing, too.
Yep. The important dates are mostly that report cards are coming on January 10?
Well, not too much.
Okay, maybe not.
Guys tomorrow.
Okay. I don't know what date is.
Uh, pending any, um, any issues with the Thursday, Monday, the 13th, they're going on, uh, which the, uh, which is it is on Monday.
Oh, when they come back in, right, right? Well, I will tell you, no bus is going down my road. That's all I'm gonna say. And then there's a couple more days off in January.
The Capitol Conference coming up on January 27.
So just some VSBA-type conferences, that's, good thing about the Capitol Conference is just, it does some of the hot topics that we've seen develop over January, once the legislative season has really kicked it in high gear, which it's starting to. So that's, that's really what, the good experience coming out of that is just to stay on top of what the conversations are about the budget and legislative topics.
And I will tell you, too, that if you guys don't already get the email from J.T. Kessler, he does this Friday's webinar. That's really good to listen to, and it keeps you up to date on what's going on in Richmond regarding education and some of that. It's with their kinda look at it, the VSBA look at it, and it's pretty interesting, so... So, question on the person who put this together. So, C, Item C under three, new agenda item is just like a blank?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I just didn't know if I should ignore that, or... All right, so now we go to comments from the Superintendent.
All right. I'm not there yet, so, um, I don't know what we need to do about that. We're gonna, we're gonna figure that out in a second. All right, so, um, yes, winter storm, I think it's Blair. She needs to go. And, but I think she has a sister or a brother coming in this weekend, so it's kinda wreaked havoc on our return to school, but I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Campbell, Mr. Ashley, and all the members of the Maintenance, Transportation, and Custodial Team that's worked really, really hard. Also, all the local agencies that have been working so hard to take care of all of our roads. It is not a, a single group's actions to try to take care of all of this. Also, our principals and our staff members who've gotten out there in the last couple of days just pitching in, grabbing a, a, oh, yep, grabbing a shovel to be able to help out. So just wanna thank everyone. I appreciate the patience with a lot of our weather calls. I know we sometimes get the, well, it's fine out my window. It's very different all throughout the county, and it can be within a mile. So, I just appreciate the patience. I know we have some parents like, please, I'm fine with my kids staying home, and others like, please, get them back into school. So, I'm aware, I'm very aware of that. We miss our kids, we miss our staff, but we wanna make sure we do it in the safest possible way. When we do return, we will continue with our cell phone and personal electronic device policy that we've been using. If you'll remember, I think it was July, I talked about how our policy is closely aligned with Executive Order 33. However, we do have some slight differences. The biggest alignment is we agree, taking the interruptions of the cell phones out of the classroom during instructional time is critical. It is critical to the success of our teachers and our students, and it's also just taking the worry off of everybody's minds. We, we have an off-and-away-all-day policy, particularly for our elementary and our middle school students. Away meaning in a backpack, not in their back pocket, having it kind of out and away. At our high school, off-and-away-in-the-backpack during the instructional time in the classroom, we do allow transition in lunches. We've been doing that. And speaking with parents and students and teachers, we polled the teachers at the high school, the support of keeping it the same, because it seems to be working. We emphasized, then that's all the more reason you don't use it in the classroom, and so do not be upset if a teacher takes your phone because you were using it in an inappropriate time. There are, there are appropriate times to use it or reasons to use it. We know there's medical reasons at times. And so, like I've said before, nurses, our administrators are fantastic with communicating with our, our students and setting up the opportunities to do that. And then at lunch, we do recognize that there are some situations, particularly for our high school students, to be able to access that at transition and at lunch. But also, it's an opportunity to help develop self-regulation for our students. You know, it's our job to get them ready for the rest of their life, and if they're never able to practice it under that guidance, and seeing our adults model it for them, our adults not using their phone during class, not because the kids can't, but because we're modeling what professionals do in that environment. And I think, I believe strongly, and that's a part of what we wanna work towards. I've also said, if it starts to not work for us, then we'll revisit this. But right now, the resounding feedback was, it works for us right now, let's continue with it. And I think that's what we're gonna do. The Videoe Calc tool, so, it's the, the tool that we use to process the governor's budget or any other budget that's, that's provided us, and then it inputs how state money or how that budget translates into money for us. So we got that Tuesday, so Ms. Irvin has been working very diligently to try to input all of that and see how does that, what does that mean for us? What money are we gonna get for the state? How is that gonna come to us? We do know that built into that budget is a 3% raise for staff. I think it's important to note, because this is very confusing, you see it on media all the time, all the staff is getting raises. Well, that's not exactly what that means. What it means is, all staff that fall under the standards of quality, or SOQ, are scheduled to get a raise. But that's also not taking into consideration the LCI, the Local Composite Index. Not that anybody in this room needs reminder, but our LCI is 6645, which means the state is saying that the locality should be able to shoulder 2/3 of those costs. So I'm just putting that out there. We do know that that 3% has been in there. We're looking at, last year, we applied a staggered raise to most of our employees, not all of our employees, and because previously, as a Board, you've stated, that being in the top 25 was a priority, and we wanna continue to be able to support that. In your folders, your menila folders, you'll see that there's the VEA salary study, as well as the calc tool. There'll be a quiz on the calc tool, you know, later on this week. But it, it allows us to be able to compare where is Nelson County versus the rest of the state, or even, you know, our, our region, our locality. So you'll find the VEA study, and it has a little marker on it to the page of where you can see where we are. So, in February, when we present the Superintendent's Recommended Budget, we will be recommending another staggered raise, so we can continue to build up particularly 15, 20, 25 years, because that has been clearly articulated, that retaining the high-quality workforce and bringing those salary scales up to 25, up to the 25, so we need to start really chipping away at that. So I'm just putting that on your radar for the February Board Meeting, and also that if you have feedback on, on that thought process, that you know that that, that is the intended recommendation, but if you have some feedback on that, please, by all means, provide it. And then last but not least, we have missed our students, and we have two student representatives here, and it's really nice to be able to see you guys. We miss our staff. And we just want everybody back safely, so we're looking forward to that on Monday. Any questions? Okay, now we're gonna roll right into that presentation right there. We're gonna do it what appears to be a little different way, which is always exciting. New year, new us. Okay, let's see if this is working. Okay, all right, so Shannon, if you can help me on this, can you just scroll down to the administrative slide? That would be fantastic. So we finalized the year in terms of 2024 information. It seems like just yesterday, we had a School Board meeting in December, so when we have two weeks off, also, there's just not a whole lot as much going on to report back on. But in terms of the finance world, there's been working on technology grants, working on finalizing reports. Participated, Ms. Irvin and myself participated in the VASVASBO Winter Conference, which is really a great time for us to get updates on governor's budget, things coming down the pike legislatively, politically, things of that nature, and how we feel like it might impact our budget. And then also, like I said, the calc tool came out. That's really big for us when it comes to building our budget to present to you. And also, central office-wise, when it comes into the holiday time, taking the advantage of being able to celebrate it with each other, getting to know the personalities of everybody involved a little bit with how they choose to celebrate some things is always great, so had a great time with that. Can you scroll down to instruction for me? All right, so we're in calendar, next year's instructional calendar. We sent a survey out to all of our staff, and they've gotten responses, and I believe tomorrow we'll be sending a survey out, and Ms. Douglas will talk a little bit more about that, survey out to community. So we've been working on that. Also, we had scheduled for this past Tuesday to have some professional development due to the weather. We're gonna postpone that, but really looking forward to being able to work with our staff with T-TAC and some of those things, and the feedback we got with behaviors, really wanted to be able to start working on that. Also held lead innovators, finished up fall testing throughout the end of December, so working on different reports that we're gonna be submitting. Next, human resources. All right. Now we're heading into the big recruiting season, and that's where we start setting up at different recruiting fairs, different places to be able to do so. So we'll be going to Bridgewater and Liberty University and UVA coming up soon. We're also looking to kind of join some individuals coming to our team to hire a teacher at Ty River. That individual we're hiring was a direct connection to one of our recruiting efforts at Liberty last year, so we're starting to see the fruits of our labor by doing that. We've also been attending multi-region in-person HR meetings, Henrico later on this, this month. Teacher of the Year, we've, that was slated to be tomorrow, to be able to go to each of the schools, but on Monday, we will visit each of the schools to be able to celebrate the Teacher of the Year. So we'll be taking time on Monday to be able to do that, to celebrate. The thing that's so great about that is it's peer-nominated, so that is always a really outstanding honor for each of those teachers, and that will then transition into the Division Teacher of the Year, where that committee will review and interview those individuals who wanna move on. All right. A lot of collaboration between SPED and the Maintenance of Efforts Report to try to make sure that we're in compliance with time spent and how we're spending our money. Outpatient Mental Health Services will begin January 22nd, so this is something we've talked about, Mental Health Services supports for our students. This is one of those efforts that we're, we're able to get going and start, and that, and we're excited about that coming. Where the School Counselor will begin, I'm sorry, in addition to the outpatient, we have our School Counselor for Ty River starting in, right now, so we're pretty excited about that. Continued work, we mentioned it the last time, that there's a Help Desk, a SPED Help Desk, meetings that we're holding at each of the schools, and it's not just for SPED teachers, but it's for Gen Ed teachers that may have questions about different components or different aspects of special education, anything 504, anything IEP that they may have a question about, or a process or a timeline. Also, scheduling additional child find screenings to identify children. We, we do have a lot coming up, but we're coming up to the end of those timelines, so we wanna make sure that we get that in with enough time. Virginia Board of Nursing site visit on January 27th and 28th. So there's still a lot going on, even at a short amount of time. Can you scroll to technology? Some of the big things that we have is, we had a big push in the fall to get Promethean boards at each of our schools, but there's also the screen beams that allow direct connection from a teacher's laptop or Chromebook to be able to connect directly without having to be tethered to the actual Promethean board. So that has been updated in, in all of our elementary schools to be able to access it like that. Also, continuing with network switching upgrades. We've talked about Zero Eyes and making, we've been working very closely with Zero Eyes to make sure that our technology upgrades and getting everything that we're, we need to be doing to get set up with that. They're working to finish that project technologies. Also, training users for best practices. We continue to, to look for opportunities to bolster our cybersecurity, bolster our technology programs to be able to, to do the best that we can. Maintenance hasn't been doing too much this week, but over break, we were able to install a new air-cooled chiller that was installed on the 3rd. Maintenance and custodian workers also prepared for the upcoming snowstorm prior to it coming, but also have been working overtime once it did arrive, and coordinated with contractors to make sure that we had the lots getting cleared, and then working with our own teams to make sure the walkways and everything was taking place. So that middle picture off to the right, you'll see, you know, principal even involved in shoveling some things, so... It was a, it was a big team effort. And that's all they've been doing, and I, I do wanna say that, like, this takes place when everybody else is warm and toasty inside, and they're, you know, it's still dark out. They're still trying to work to, to make it presentable and safe. Transportation, same thing. They had their... They had their holiday celebration where they brought all drivers in, and it was a really great event, had a chance to kind of observe that and be there. And it was a really wonderful time to be able to see everyone together celebrating each other. Also working on the Clean School Bus Program. We do have those two electric buses, but continue to look for and support those, that program that we're a part of. Obviously, transportation was a huge critical part about checking the roads and making sure, you know, you hear me in their messages talk about turnarounds. Well, our buses have to get to certain areas, but then they have to turn around, and those turnarounds need to be safe. Like I said, well, you know, the road, the road in front of my house seems to be good. Yeah, but the other roads that we need to take may be okay, but you got to turn around. And I think those are some of the things that we just lose sight, when you don't have to do it, you don't have to be the person driving, you can take it for granted. Even driving down 29, it looks really great, but then you start to see the water dripping off the trees because it's melting a little bit. Well, that's going to refreeze when it turns to be nine degrees at night. So there's a lot of things taking place. And also, transportation was a great presence at the Livingston Parade, not only the bus, but decorating it and participating in it. So I just appreciate the overall enthusiasm. And school nutrition towards the end of the, before break, there's a lot of holiday meals. One of the things that our school nutrition teams do is, they really get into the spirit of it, and they really get into the themes of things. So they were all in on being able to provide those meals, but also have a little fun leading into the holidays. Also, all onsite administrative reviews have been completed, and we are starting to feed the supper after-school programs and tutoring at Rockfish. So you see our numbers over there for a short, small month. We still, those numbers are, one of them just a little bit below November's numbers, and the other was more than, just right at the November numbers. So that's impressive. And last, second to last slide, Livingston Christmas Parade, it's always a great deal of fun. We get individuals who are participating in this decorating the bus and then just being a part of it. But we also saw our little color guard, our elementary color guard from, in Rockfish and Ty River. You see in that bottom right, our cheerleaders were very present at the parade and also our marching band. So it was a great experience, great time, a little cold, but it was a wonderful event. And last but not least, winter storm Blair, again, she needs to leave. But I think sometimes, you know, when you go through situations like this, you see the good and the bad. You see the beautiful drive down 56 in the upper left-hand corner, but then you see the other roads that are kind of snowed, packed in and iced over. But then you see the middle picture, like, this is the, this is the county that we live in. And it's beautiful, but it has its own way of dealing with the winter. But I just appreciate everybody working so hard to get us ready, and hopefully Monday is our start and return back so we can get going and have a strong finish to our semester.
I just want to say, the parade was incredible. And the amount of participation from our school system was just fantastic. And the kids were so excited. It was cold, but the kids didn't care. They were so excited. I mean, we had the book box people that were there, we had the marching governors, we had transportation and lots of other community members, including some of our teachers, involved in the bus. It flowed. The little kids doing the, it was just, FCCLA had a, so much of that parade was tied to, perfectly tied to our schools and our kids participating in it. So it was really well done from Nelson County Public Schools overall.
I love that, we handed out like glow sticks and going out into the crowd. And how many of our older kids, they were there, and it was just fun because they were like, sure, I'll take a glow stick, as opposed to trying to hide.
You know, sometimes you see people on the outside, and they're like, oh, please don't look at me. But they're like, yeah, we'll take that. So it was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we get to hear from our student representatives.
So the musical is getting started. They will be performing newsies later this year. Auditions and a read-through were already held before the break, and practice will be when we get back to school. Additionally, basketball, the boys have been doing very well, with JV being 7-0 and varsity being 7-1.
Wow.
The girls have been working very hard, improving every game with the JV and varsity being 0-7. Track and field have competed twice so far this year. Sterling Williams qualified for states in the 55 meter and the 300 meter. Dakota Shaver qualified for states at the Labor University Meet. And they will have two more meets this month, and hoping to have more athletes qualify for the state meet coming up.
National Honor Society will be holding a commons area design contest that will allow students to design the area, and then they will pick a winning design and will try to redesign the common space as that design. SCA, when we get back to school, will be holding a winter pep rally where we will, where they will have different games for students and teachers to participate in, and also the sports teams will be recognized. FFA had some members of the chapter in Colorado today compete in a livestock judging contest at Colorado State University. And FCCLA will be holding two fundraisers this month to raise money for their state conference competition in April. And those fundraisers are, include a calendar fundraiser and then getting ready and selling for the chocolate strawberries.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have comments from the public, which something tells me, unless you want to say something, we're all good.
I'm all set.
You sure?
Y'all are doing great. I appreciate you all.
There you go. Can we have your name and your address, please? Okay. Thank you very much. Now we're at the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there's any discussion or anything.
I believe we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. No nays or abstentions. So now we move to the items for information. The first one is the meeting minutes, but you have access to, to please any changes or modifications or anything, questions, bring them to our admin staff. Then we have Mr. Campbell with an update on the capital improvement plan.
New year, same projects.
Yeah.
So as Dr. Hester said in her presentation, the air-cooled chillers have arrived and been installed on January 3rd. The water-cooled chiller, however, we've gotten another date for delivery, our ship date. So we're now to January 23rd for a ship date, and we're looking at January 28th to install it. It's going to be during the school day, but I've already talked to Honeywell about arrival and dismissal times for the crane structure and all to be set up and taken down, not to interfere with the bus routes. Update on the air compressors, they have been delivered, and they are being installed this week. So we're, we're actually, we're knocking down the list. The renovation, Phase II renovation, the Mosley is working on the RFP documents to send out. The goal is to send it out the 15th next week. So Shannon and I have been working, answering as many questions as we can from Mosley, try to button things up to get that sent out. The modernization of the elevator at high school, there's no updates at this point in time. And the Rockfish playground is now complete. Not that anybody can use it right now, but it is complete and ready to go for when the snow does decide to leave us and the kids can play on the equipment then. So there are a bunch of stuff going on, and we're getting ready to roll right into Phase II of this renovation, so busy.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Are there any questions?
What kind of date would we think we would be looking at for beginning construction? We'll pay a few part.
Phase II, we're, yes, right after graduation, June, first of June. There's possibly some work that maybe get done during spring break. We're talking, trying to, one of the main things we have to do at the beginning is to get another access point for water to come in.
Right.
So we're talking about in front of the school, the bus loop tying in, in the front, kind of in between the middle school and high school and going in, right there with another branch of water, so we can.
You have them working with the authority?
Yes. Yeah. So.
You should just tap that little creek or whatever that's over by the middle school.
There you go, yeah.
Bring that in.
So yeah, so we're working with, Andy has been working with Candy, trying to see what we can do as far as like the tax fees and stuff like that, if we can get some of those kind of.
I'm working with the water authority.
Yes.
Which was considered.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah, water authority. Yeah.
All right. And next we have Mrs. Kim Douglas on the calendar for 25, 26.
We are currently working on the 2025, 26 calendar. So what we've done at this point in time, I just wanted to kind of inform you of the process and where we are. We, our staff, so that has gone out before Christmas break, and we had our staff input, and we received all of that and closed that survey and organized that data. The next step will be tomorrow, we'll send out information, a survey for our community. So we'll have it available on our website for the public to make comment and for our board to make comment. Then we'll have a student survey as well go out to our seniors to get input from our students. We'll summarize those results and use those results to develop some calendars, so have some draft calendar options. We'll also look at surrounding divisions just to get some insight on what they're doing around us. And one of the questions on the survey, and I've actually included the two surveys that I had, one prepared for the community and one for the actual staff. I don't have the student survey, forgive me, on your information. But you'll notice on the surveys, it mentions the preferences for start dates, for end dates, for fall break or no fall break, for Thanksgiving, you know, the holidays overall, mid-year, spring break. So all of that information, in addition to instructional questions about asynchronous planning, information for teacher-parent, teacher-workdays, that type of thing. So information and insight already from our staff, and for the community input. And when we get that, we'll have those drafts prepared, and then as we have done over the years, we'll have those drafts available and then propose a calendar for our next meeting date. Any questions on that process? Okay. Great.
Thank you, Mark. And you stay up there because you need to give us our first semester discipline information.
Okay, and I'm staying in for Dr. Y. So I'm going to give you a handout that he had prepared. And this information is on discipline data, and it's 2023 data and for first semester versus the 2024 data for first semester. I'm going to point out for the discipline data, the trends that we're seeing overall. When you're looking at this information, if you will, it's a lot there on the tables, but the top left corner is Semester 1 of 2023 referrals. Below that is Semester 1 of 2024 referrals. Overall, the codes this year, we've been more detailed in recording infractions and the specifics of the infractions. So the chart below kind of breaks down those descriptions. If you look on the right side, on the bottom right side, there's two charts there. There's the top 10 behaviors from Semester 1 of '23 and the top 10 behaviors of Semester 1 of '24. When looking at this information, overall, in Nelson County Public Schools, there's been a decrease in both the overall number of the disciplinary referrals or events and the number of participants involved in those events. So the number of disciplinary events has decreased by 14%. And if you'll notice in those charts, again, the top left, there's 334 below the first chart, and then 293 below the second chart. That kind of gives you the comparison data there. The number of offenders has decreased by 11%. So that's from 159 versus 177 in the past. Behavior improved. It was the number one most frequent behavior in the fall of '23, but it's not even in the top 10 for this semester, this past semester, for Semester 1 of '24. Incidents coded as behaviors that impede the academic progress have increased some, and the top three most frequently coded behaviors are interfering with learning in class, profane vulgar language, and refusal to comply with staff request. In the fall semester, there were told of six students who were referred for the superintense disciplinary committee, and this is a dramatic reduction from the 13 from Semester 1 last year that were referred. School-wide trends, individually, we have Nelson County High School has experienced some, some increase, but the number of events and offenders relative to last year, they had 167 referrals, and that's up from 99, and 83 offenders, which was up from 56. It seems that the majority of those referrals are from the freshman cohort. So looking at that information there. And then single referrals, there've been 43 offenders, and 17 have received two referrals, and 21 have received three to five referrals. So some repeat offenses there. Nelson Middle School has experienced a significant reduction, around 70% for the number of events and the number of offenders, with 52 referrals down from 177, and 27 offenders down from 89. Rockfish has experienced a slight reduction in the number of disciplinary events. They had 32 referrals, they were down from 39. And Ty River has experienced an increase in referrals and offenders. They had 41 referrals, up from 19, and 26 offenders up from 12. And of the 26 offenders, 15 have received a single referral, but the remaining 10 have received two or three. So sometimes it's the same students that have repeat offenses. The data presented supports here that we need to continue with interventions that might include social-emotional supports, which we currently have in place, the employment of a behavioral specialist, staffing of an assistant principal at every school, and maintain low counselor-to-student ratios at the secondary level. That's an overview. Do you have any questions about that information?
Definitely point out, if we take a look at elementary, we do see, we do see some increases. We do see some grade increases. You know, there's, part of it is reference to high school, you see some things coming out of ninth grade. Do we have a ninth grade? We should do. It's a little more accelerated this year. I think even at Ty River, I might be coming out of fifth grade and second grade. So I appreciate the administrators taking time to evaluate that data because they look at not only who it is, repeat offenders, singletons, but where, what time, all these different things. And that takes time to be able to disaggregate. And I think when you have more and more of some of these behaviors, they're also very time-consuming, and a lot of times they're tied to some behavioral concerns. And so that's not just something you bring a kid in, talk to them real quick, and you send them right back out. It takes a lot of investment of time. So that's when we say when we need those behavioral supports, but also, I think we've tried the one assistant principal back and forth at the elementaries. We've tried it twice, and we've tried it earnestly. In this day and age, with the needs of not only our students, but all the things that we're asking our teachers to do, well, that doesn't just happen. There's a lot of planning, there's a lot of other supports involved, and that requires the administrators, and we need to make sure that we have the right numbers for that. They do so much, the teachers do so much, that we need to make sure that we're bringing that back, because these numbers show that we need that support, and we need someone staying on top of it. And when you have that presence, you have someone who's always involved with these kids and working and talking them through it, then a lot of times it can decline the repeat offenders or minimize the number of repeats. And so I think that there's a lot that when you take a look at this, that when you disaggregate it, you can glean a lot from it. There's a need for the behavioral supports from all different aspects, whether it's counselors, SROs, administrators, but also the behavioral support individuals. So I think we see some good stuff coming out of, you know, our Laura Wolf and our two behavioral support individuals at Rockfish and Ty River. But also, we re-institute in-school, at the middle, in-school suspension at the middle school. So all these different interventions are coming in to be able to support our kids. And I think it's really important to be able to take a look at this data, not only as a school board, because you hear things, but also know that our administrators are taking a look at this, we're taking a look at this to see what can we do to support the kids in the classroom, the teachers, the other students in the classroom that experienced this as well, and the whole school as a whole. So I think it's, I appreciate this data, and so data geeks like me, we like to look at this to see, how does this translate? What does this mean for us? And I think a lot of times the questions we get are, what's the bullying look like? I think we have one, one, one referral for, one consequence for that.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Why am I pink and you're blue? Thank you very much. So our items for action is to, for us to go into closed session of, I think that we probably do need to go into closed session for personnel matters to discuss the, at least the personnel action. So can I have a motion for it all? Oh, and legal too? Okay, legal too.
You get to think.
Personnel and legal, they're in here.
I move that the board go into closed session to discuss and consider the personnel report and other confidential personnel matters as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 for purposes of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. I also move that we go into closed session to discuss legal matters with possible conversations with counsel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia regarding a specific legal matter or matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Say.
All in favor? We are in closed session. Thank you very much.